If I could ask everyone to rise while we pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. If the clerk would call the roll.
Mayor Elliott. Mr. Gendron.
Here.
Ms. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Rossikowicz.
Here.
Ms. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you very much. We are getting started. The mayor has expected any moment, so he'll be taking the podium as soon as he arrives. But we would like to start. We have a special order of business from a request from this committee. We invited the Middlesex Community College to come and make a presentation to us on the Bridge program, so we'd invite their representatives to please come up, introduce yourselves, and we look forward to your report.
Good evening, members of the school committee, Superintendent Franco and associates. And I have to say right up front, my colleague just said, "Interesting, the men sit on one side and the women sit on the other." I assured her it was in alphabetical order.[83.00][83.00](Laughter). I'm Molly Sheehy, and I'm representing Middlesex Community College and specifically the Bridge program. And we're respectfully requesting an addition of $26,000 to the Bridge budget. As you all know, Middlesex Community College and the Lowell Public Schools have been partners since the college came to Lowell in 1987, so 27 years. We have invested millions of dollars, federal grants, state grants, and private foundations. And we have served together thousands of young people who we hope that through those various programs achieved greater success in school. The Bridge program is a little different in that it is a contract between Middlesex Community College and the Lowell Public Schools. And to be more specific now and answer any questions you might have, I'm going to ask the director, Ellen Spiegel, to come to the mic. Ellen has been the director all 15 years of the school's existence, and frankly, she's one of my heroes.
Eighteen. (Laughter). That means I'm older.
Thank you, Molly. My name is Ellen Spiegel. I am the founding director of the Bridge program. It was started in 1997. I'm proud to say that the Bridge has serviced 546 students over the past 18 years. Each year, we put out an annual report that provides an account of many of our successes for that year. And if you look in your PDF document that's in your packets and you turn to page 10 and then page 8, I can call attention to progress that's been made. And you should feel free to stop me if you've heard enough and I'm talking too much because, as the students say, "Ms. Spiegel, that's enough." But just so you know, the students that come to the Bridge are 12 to 16. They're in grades 7 and 8. They have behavioral issues that are going on in their regular schools. It could be anything from truancy to multiple suspensions, mental health and substance abuse issues, gang involvement, family problems, academic problems. And part of what we do is figure out what's going on for each child and how can we help them so that they can have a better school experience, do some learning, grow, make some changes, and feel better about themselves. Some of our goals, and if you look on these pages or if you want, I can just tell you, attendance. Our average attendance rate from last year was 91 percent, so we're very proud of that. Behaviors, last year, suspension rates of 8th graders leaving the Bridge program were reduced by 84 percent. And the percent of students whose scores increased on our behavioral assessment tool was 78 percent. So in other words, staff do a behavioral evaluation on students before they come to the Bridge. This would be staff in the sending schools. And then when kids leave the Bridge as 8th graders to go to 9th grade, the Bridge staff will also do the same assessment to see if anything's changed. And so the numbers for last year, 78 percent, had gone up. Thirty-five percent of the Bridge students made honor roll last year. And on the Iowa test of basic skills, which we use as a pre-post-test measure in certain areas, we give it to them when they enter and then when they leave the program. Eighty-three percent of the students' scores went up in vocabulary. A hundred percent of our students' scores went up in reading comprehension. Seventy-eight percent went up in capitalization. Fifty-six percent went up in punctuation. Eighty-nine percent went up in usage. Seventy-five percent went up in math computation. And eighty-one percent went up in math data and problem solving. Also, the Bridge is proud to say that we have had 45, 47, and 42 percent parent guardian attendance at evening open houses and 75 percent parent guardian attendance at our end-of-the-year Promotion Day celebration. Now on page 8, around promotions. As you can see, despite a student population with 44 percent of the students' DCF involved and 37 percent of the students' court involved, the Bridge program promoted 100 percent of the students last June. Four students went to the Greater Lowell Regional Vocational Technical High School. Two students went to Innovation Charter. Two students went to an adjustment class at Lowell High School. And 14 students moved on to Career Academy. The remaining students were promoted within the Bridge program. I hope that this data gives you some idea of the successes we had this past year. And we do have annual reports from all our previous years as well that speak very similarly to the type of work we do. So thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on the special order of business, Mr. -- I'm sorry, Mr. Gendron? Mr. Conway?
Yeah, could we make some comments on this?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that I wasn't here at the last school committee meeting when this particular program was discussed, but I can say from firsthand knowledge, being a housemaster for a number of years, I dealt directly with the Bridge program. And I know that Ellen Spiegel has certainly invited the staff, administration, and so forth to go up to the school and see how it's run, which we certainly did do that. And, you know, I know that they're dealing with a very complicated clientele and very involved, and yet amazingly, they do an incredible job. And I certainly commend them for that. And again, it's a program that I think the money is well worth putting into. Actually, I would like to see eventually that the program perhaps be even expanded, if at all possible. But again, I just wanted to put that on the table, that again, I find them to be a very effective program. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I want to thank Molly Sheehy and Ms. Spiegel for coming down here today, opportunity to meet them before the meeting. It sounds like they are doing some incredible work over at the Bridge program. And thank you for calling our attention to this report. Does seem as though there's some pretty impressive statistics in here. It's just another of the many programs that we have in Lowell to address the wide variety of needs that we have in a city like Lowell. So great to have so many committed people and so many terrific programs. I look forward to going to the -- I made a commitment tonight that I'm going to go visit, so I look forward to doing that in the near future.
Very good.
And if we need a -- I don't know if we need a motion to move on the $23,000 or not tonight, but if so, I'll make that.
Second then.
Motion to suspend the rules. Ms. Lang, response to Mr. Gendron's question?
I was just going to give you the figures. It would actually be a motion to transfer $26,000 from the suspense account to the Bridge program contracted services account and then approve the fiscal year '15 contract in the amount of $868,063.
Okay. Just, Madam Solicitor, is no violation of open meeting for an appropriation transfer that's not posted?[556.12][556.12](Laughter). We're good? Oh, it is on the agenda. Oh, okay. Okay, I apologize. Motion to take -- okay, motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Leary to take this item out of order. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, motion carries. Moving on to that item. Okay, so this is on the report of the superintendent. Item number 12, Middlesex Community College requests for additional funds. Madam Superintendent, did you want to just have anything more to add on this or we'll just bring forward the motion to approve or transfer 26 from the suspense account?
No. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I think that the Bridge program is a phenomenal program, and I appreciate the support of the committee.
Motion by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Mr. Leary to transfer 26,000, bringing the total to the contract, so it's going to be transferred to a contract, $868,063. For the discussion, Mr. Leary on the motion?
Much was already said, but I also want to thank Ms. Mendel and as well as Dr. Sheehy for coming down. I've been on the committee for eight years, and everything I've heard, everything I've read in the annual reports, when I first was on the committee, I visited. An excellent program, and I appreciate the annual reports and I appreciate them coming down tonight to really, you know, continue enlighten us about the program and what an effective a program it is to some of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leary. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott? Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent.
Six yeas, motion carries. A motion to accept the report as a report of progress and place on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. On behalf of the committee, thank you, Ms. Spiegel and Ms. Sheehy for coming tonight and providing this information to the committee.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Moving back to the regularly scheduled portion of the agenda. Moving on to item still under special order of business, item number four, Spotlight on Excellence, Mill City Grows. Welcome to City Council Chamber. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Spotlight on Excellence is a long partnership that we've had with Mill City Grows that have been involved in our schools in many different ways. We have gardens. We have farmers markets that are opening on site, coming up some very exciting, changing things to bring fresh produce to the lives of many children. Butler School tomatoes, I got one the other day, really wonderful. So I'd like to thank you for this partnership, making students really realize what it takes to feed and the volume of it. So thank you for making that real piece come to our schools, and we welcome you this evening. Francie Slater.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Franco, and thank you all in the school committee for inviting us here tonight. And thank you, Mayor Elliott, and everyone from the school department. My name is Francie Slater. I'm one of the co-founding directors of Mill City Grows, and we are here as we launch into our first formal initiative within the Lowell Public Schools, and we are absolutely thrilled at this opportunity. We were recently selected as one of the new service sites for a relatively new AmeriCorps affiliated program called FoodCorps. And I have letters for you all here that I'd love to distribute with a bit more details. But this program is just absolutely thrilling in so many ways because it allows us to bring many of the things that Superintendent Franco mentioned, gardens, markets, fresh produce into the schools, but also really link up our classroom curriculum with these hands-on experiences, working in the garden, working with food, learning about nutrition, learning about science, technology, engineering, mathematics, language arts, social studies. There's so many connections that food links within our curriculum and so many ways that food is something so personal and so deeply touching in all of our lives. So we're really excited to be able to reach such an amazing section of the Lowell population through the school department, through the school system, and we are really grateful for that opportunity. We do have some really great new events that we're launching, but I do want to introduce our new FoodCorps service member, Christopher Horn, who's joined, well, transitioned on our team. He's been with Mill City Grows for over a year now in various capacities, including work-study student, and over the summer, he was our farmer's mobile market manager. And now he's shifting into a new position, which is new for us all, but I'm sure he's going to be wonderful. But I'd love to let him tell you a little bit more about himself and invite you to an upcoming event.
Thank you, guys. I'm proud to be here. I'm a lifelong Lowell resident. I went through the middle schools here. I went to Lowell High School, and I just graduated from UMass Lowell, so I'm Lowell all the way, pretty much.[896.75][896.75](Laughter) And I'm excited to work at Mill City Grows and to continue working with them, even with different partnerships like FoodCorps. It's going to be a very exciting year, and the first thing we're doing is launching this free market program at the Robinson McCall of School. So I first would like to offer an invitation for all of you to join. September 11th will be our open house for it. So I'd like for you guys all to be there, to see it flourish and to see, hopefully, an abundance of food going out to these families and children to eat. And yes, I just want to thank you again, and I'm very excited for this program to start. And thank you.
We have a schedule of those farmers' markets extending through the end or near the end of October on every Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00. So if you can't make the 11th, we'd love to see you at any of those later dates up at the market. It's something that this is the first time we've done a free market here in Lowell. And Leahy Clinic, Leahy Hospital and Medical Center is sponsoring this market with a great generosity, and we hope that it's the beginning of a longer relationship with them. And I know that folks from Leahy will be at the event on the 11th and would really love to hear from the Lowell community, the Lowell school community, about what the need is here and how we can work together to create programming to meet that need and create healthy and strong families here. So again, we welcome you to join us on the 11th or at any of the markets. If you ever want to come on a tour of any of the school garden locations, we've had a couple of folks in this room out there in the gardens digging with the kids. It's a lot of fun, and we welcome you at any of those locations. Thank you so much, and I will pass these over for distribution amongst yourselves. Thank you so much.[1006.25][1006.25](Applause).
I know Mr. Gendron and I have a -- we experienced your program. I think it was a wonderful day, and I think that, you know, the programs and so many things that you're doing throughout the city are terrific and, you know, personally, congratulations. I just have one question. I'm wondering how the plants that I planted are doing versus the plants that Mr. Gendron planted?
We were actually at the Stockloso Garden yesterday. Christopher was there, too. It was his first day as a service member, and that garden is doing phenomenally well. And I don't know if it was the magic touch of school committee members and Mayor Elliott being there to plant those seeds, but that garden is truly flourishing, and people are already talking about expanding it and growing into a larger garden in the future there.
It was a fun experience and I recognize Mr. Gendron, but you know, the kids, the enthusiasm with the kids and the instruction that you provided, you know, the science, the, you know, the sustainability, it was just, I think it's a wonderful experience to get kids when, you know, when they learn at an age when they can, you know, benefit from this. Mr. Gendron?
I'm sure it was our leadership, Mr. Mayor, that brought that garden to such a fruitful state that it's in. But I personally want to thank Francie and Mill City Grows and now Chris and Lydia for all they do for the Lowell Public Schools. It's such a great program to partner with the schools, to bring these gardens into the inner-city schools. It can be used in so many educational ways, and it's a lot of fun for the kids, too. So thanks for all you do for the public schools and the city in general. And welcome aboard, Chris.
Thank you.
Entertain -- accept the report as a -- well, I guess just a thank you. It's not a report, but thank you and thanks to Lydia as well and Chris. Moving on to the next item. We have the minutes. Entertaining a motion to approve the minutes from the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, August 20th by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Ms. Scott. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the next section of the agenda, we have permission to enter. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To United Teen Equality Center Incorporated in the amount of $200,000 to provide for an alternative diploma program, ADP, that will serve 30 students in grades 10 through 12 who require a long-term alternative education setting, including the integration of special education students with non-emotional IEPs. The funding will be provided by the school department, local budget, and the Mass Grad Grant.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Motion to approve by Ms. Rossikowicz, seconded by Mr. Leary. Discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossikowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have motions. First motion of the evening by Mr. Leary to recommend to the school committee adopt and implement the recommendation of the City Lowell Law Department pertaining to the hiring of family members in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 71, Section 67.
Just, if I could just make a motion to suspend the rules to take in
I just got to get a second. Second on the motion by Mr. Gendron, Mr. Leary.
Can I make a motion to suspend the rules to add the item number 11 and item number 20, which are basically the same, the whole, about the same process, but the same issue? So bringing in the policy subcommittee as well as the legal opinion.
Motion to -- no objection by the members will just include discussion of legal, item number 20, legal opinion on nepotism policy. Did you have something, Madam Solicitor? Not yet. Okay. Any objection to motion to suspend by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz? All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, motion carries. So we note with no objection, we'll also entertain the legal opinion on nepotism policy. Ms. Rossikowicz?
I would actually even think that probably it's more proper for Ms. Scott to report out on that policy subcommittee first because that's where a lot of this is stemming from. Just a thought.
Okay, so we have two items up for discussion, and then we have reports that would come in under subcommittee report. I guess the motion would be to delay these two items until and bring in the subcommittee report?
Well, why don't we bring the subcommittee report, read the minutes out, and then we can take up my motion and the legal opinion. It all ties in together.
Right. I don't want to get mired in this parliamentary procedure, but, okay, if there's no objection, we'll go with the subcommittee report?
Cool.
Okay. Report, Ms. Scott.
Okay, sorry, I have to pull it out now. I didn't expect it to come up right now. The policy subcommittee met on Monday, July 14th at 6:30 PM. Present were Kristen Rossikowicz, David Conway, and myself, and school department personnel Jay Lang. Also present was the city solicitor, I'm sorry, city assistant, city solicitor, Michael Carlson. I called the meeting's order at 6:40 PM, and the following agenda items were discussed. The policy manual review, Section B. There were four documents to review. The original Lowell Public Schools manual, Section B, the Mass School Committee policy manual, Section B, policies BA through BEC, policies BED through BK, and legal opinion on nepotism policy. Ms. Lang and Attorney Carlson reviewed the differences between the current Lowell Public Schools policy and the Mass School Committee's recommended language and the subcommittee member, with the subcommittee members. Excuse me. There were few substantive changes between the two policy manuals with regard to Section B. It was agreed that Mr. Lang and Attorney Carlson would incorporate the recommended actions of the subcommittee members into a revised Section B and present the revisions and recommendations to the committee at a later date. Subcommittee members also discussed the legal opinion received from the City of Lowell Solicitor's Office pertaining to Ms. Scott's proposed nepotism policy. Brief discussion was presented. A motion was made to adopt the second option from the Law Department, which was, in order to avoid the appearance of any possible conflict, it is the policy of the school committee, then no employee be hired who is related to any member of the school committee or who is related to any administrator of the school district. The provision will not affect anyone currently employed in the district who may be related to either a school committee member or an administrator. And a motion was to, I'm sorry, a motion to accept the report as a report of progress was approved three to nothing.
So the report from the subcommittee is to bring
Adopt the motion.
To adopt the motion, which is
Excuse me, sorry.
To reject the Solicitor's office, that recommendation, and that the school committee implement a ban on the hiring of media family members of the school committee members and administrators altogether, while grandfathering any previously hired family members. Correct?
That's correct.
So that is the motion before. Second on the motion, seconded by Ms. Rossikowicz. Discussion, Mr. Leary?
Just to go on, I think to make a substitute to that motion, to actually take the recommendation of the legal department, which is my actual motion. I think it's somewhat semantics, but I think this, I think the recommendations, well, maybe make the substitute motion to take the actual recommendations from the legal department.
Motion to substitute? Second on the substitute? Mr. Gendron? Motion is seconded. Discussion on the substitute motion, Mr. Leary?
So I guess the first thing, I didn't have a chance to make the policy subcommittee meeting, so I apologize, but if we could get the opinion from the legal department for the full committee and also have it, you know, televised, I'd like to see exactly what that legal opinion was and why they came up with that particular opinion.
We have the solicitor right here.
Thank you.
Madam Solicitor?
Sure. Just to be clear also, do members have the, everyone have the opinion? This was a matter that was worked on by one of the attorneys in the office, and in reviewing and providing the committee with our recommendation, there were certain factors that weighed heavily in that. First of all, the current state of the law in this area is such that the vast majority of school committees, 44 as compared to just 16, have adopted what we recommended. I think what's equally important in our recommendation is that while we recommended the approach that is being utilized right now by the majority of school committees, that that method be reassessed after a brief period of time. So that in the event that it is not fulfilling whatever function the committee had anticipated, that the matter be scheduled for review and then further action can be taken. In making that kind of a recommendation, I think that it is helpful to start off from a certain benchmark, and then if you need to make a policy more restrictive, you can then take the steps to do that later on. What becomes more difficult is if you start off with a more restrictive policy and then try to, if you start to run into problems that weren't necessarily foreseen with respect to the hampering of hiring or promotions, that to undo that becomes a little bit more complicated. And if there were personnel that were, say, adversely affected by the original policy and it was undone and then others advanced, that it creates an equitable situation. So if you, the rationale was that if you start off from the policy that most communities have formally adopted, then in the event that you need to make it more restrictive, you're in a better position to do that than the opposite. One other thing about all of this really is that the, whether it's the State Ethics Commission or some of these individual bodies, I think that particularly for a community this size, one of the things that we were mindful of are the number, as the community is larger and the hiring authority is larger, you will have a tendency to run into more and more sort of conflicts. And that's something that I think the, if we look to what's required by the state and the State Ethics Commission, my feeling is that's a, should give us some level of comfort that these are requirements that are well thought out, but what's equally important is that they don't necessarily go farther. And that's not to say that it wouldn't be advisable at some point to go farther, but that it should be done in a cautious manner and in a deliberate manner. And since this really hadn't been on the forefront of the school department in the past, that taking the step and adopting what most communities have adopted was our initial recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Leary, all set? Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it makes sense to adopt the Law Department's recommendation on this matter. First of all, you know, when it comes to hiring, I expect the administration to hire the best people, period. And if, for whatever reason, they're not hiring the best people, if they're being unduly influenced by somebody who's a relative or somebody who's a friend or somebody who's a neighbor, that's inappropriate. They should hire the best people regardless of who they are. They want the best qualified They want the best qualified people to work for Lowell Public Schools, and the City of Lowell for that matter. I think the law department's recommendation would, if there was a case where a relative was being hired, relative of an administrator or what have you, is being hired, the appearance of a conflict is, you know, is removed by publicly declaring with the city clerk that this person has a connection to administrator. I think that takes that appearance of a conflict off the table. And I feel as though eliminating anybody who happens to be related to somebody could eliminate some very good candidates. So I don't think that's a wise thing to do. I think that the best approach is to take the recommendation of the law department, as reflected in Mr. Delary's motion, and that is, you know, having, remove that appearance of a conflict by making a public declaration if there comes a time that, you know, a close relative is going to be hired by the public school department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Taking a look at the motion, basically it says just follow the law that's already on the books in Massachusetts law. And I'm not sure why we necessarily need a motion to follow an existing law. To me, that doesn't logically follow. But to continue, the, the subcommittee, I think the intent of the subcommittee was to take this particular law here and strengthen it. I think that certainly, I know myself and I know some of my colleagues have certainly received a number of telephone calls. People were very upset about the hiring process. And this isn't, this isn't something unusual. I mean, it goes back decades. There's obviously problems with the hiring. And if, and if we think that, you know, we're always going to pick the most qualified person, I think that, I think I have another bridge that I can sell to someone, because it doesn't always work that way. Should it work that way? Of course. We all know that. But we also know, deep down inside, it doesn't work that way. And I think just by putting, putting together a stronger, some teeth to this particular recommendation, and the city solicitor, assistant city solicitor, if I recall, said that there were a number of towns and cities that adopted something stronger than the Massachusetts law, Chapter 71, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city solicitor. How many, how many towns and cities, how many towns and cities have adopted something stronger than the existing law on the books?
In Massachusetts, there have been 16 other communities that have adopted measures stronger than what was recommended to the school committee.
And to your, your understanding, out of those 16 towns and cities, are they violating the law at all by having stronger, adopting a stronger policy? Are they, would you say, in your opinion, that they, they could be violating the law?
Not that I'm aware of. Obviously, not all of those policies have been, have been reviewed, but I think, understanding the nature of your question, it's certainly permissible to go beyond what is, what is required. And these communities have developed policies that do in fact go beyond. So again, I can't speak to all 16 policies, but the general concept, I think, is what you're getting at, and you certainly can go beyond.
Yeah, see, thank you, Madam Solicitor. Mr. Mayor, I don't really see why somebody would object to having stronger, a stronger policy. I think where the, the issue came into play was when we're talking about administrators. Administrators can be defined by so many different categories. I think what the, the intent of the subcommittee was to have the hiring agents, which would be school committee, central administration. Those would be the people that would be involved with it. So I think that, you know, again, I would like to get some more clarification, to be quite frank with you, from the city solicitor's office, as far as those 16 or 18 communities, what the wording is on their policy, so that we can take a look at their policy to see if it makes any sense or not. And perhaps we can delay this until we do have a subcommittee meeting and we do, and we bring that information forward. Do I make, can I make a motion on that?
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just thinking this through. We had a real, a real motion though, was substitute, so...
I'm sorry to complicate it.
No. I'm just trying to make sure we do the proper, follow the proper procedure. A substitute motion, I guess the best thing to do would be with, we could, we could make...
I think we should move to question.
Madam Solicitor.
Just some quick thoughts on that. The, because the nature of the substitute motion is related to the actual underlying substitute motion, it's just a slight modification, that motion then could be substituted, amended or substituted, yeah, amended.
We can amend the substitute.
You can amend the substitute motion because the amendment is related to the underlying motion closely.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Conway to delay, delay action on the substitute till additional information can be gathered by the law department. Second? Second by Ms. Ross Sikewich. Discussion on the amendment?
I, it's like a game of theater here, basically. I just got to say, one, you know, this is under ed reform. Your principal of a school is their hiring authority. You know, my colleague articulates that he gets phone calls from folks saying they didn't get a job. I get those phone calls too. We don't have the hiring authority. We hire one person here as a school committee. And to the public, if you're calling a school committee member, you shouldn't be. It's unethical. You know, prior to ed reform, I would agree with Mr. Conway, there probably were administrators that were hired, because they were hired by school committees. It was a very political process. You know, now we judge a principal by the scores, the test scores. So if they are hiring people that are not appropriate, or unqualified, or they're friends and they're not qualified, ultimately, they're the ones that are going to be held accountable. Prior to ed reform, there wasn't a test that measured a principal. So in theory, what Mr. Conway articulates is entirely possible without any remedy. This also presupposes there was an issue. I don't know of any legal issue, and Madam Solicitor, you could articulate if there is, someone that's filed a lawsuit because they didn't get a job in the Lowell Public Schools. And I'll be upfront, I don't have any relative that'll ever apply for a job in the Lowell Public Schools. Just not going to happen. I have been references for people who have not had jobs. You know, that's the way it goes. And I will be a reference for people again. And I'll publicly, if you want, publicly say who I put references for. I have no problem with that. What I do have a problem is wasting everybody's time with something that does not exist. So I will vote no on this. We'll go around and we'll have another subcommittee meeting on something that has really no issue. And I know there'd be a retort to what I've stated, and I'm not going to keep talking about it all night. If there was a significant issue, the legal department would come in and advise us accordingly. The legal department, its opinion is pretty, pretty normal. It says basically, let's tighten up the policy. If there's a need, you should review the policy, as we should frankly. That's why we formed the policy subcommittee, is to go through all our policies, to rip out the ones that don't work, change the ones that need some tinkering, and leave the ones alone that really have no, that are effective. And I wasn't going to talk a lot about it. I thought we were going to vote on this in July. We didn't. I put a motion on, because I'm saying, let's get this issue resolved. I held that motion because some folks were on vacation, because I wanted people to express their opinion, because I felt that was appropriate. Always looking to make some type of compromise at any point in time, but I don't see where there's actually a real legal issue. And again, I'll say this just to repeat it, because I know it's going to come up again. People call you because they didn't get jobs. If someone thinks they're violated because they didn't get a job, then they should be filing a lawsuit and prove their case in court. The fact that we spend our time here where good people are applying for jobs, when there's a remedy in place called MCAS scores, that we have removed principals, Madam Superintendent, time and time again, who don't measure up, it's not before ed reform. Ed reform is different. You're held accountable now. I appreciate the time, and I won't say anything else. I, it is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delary. Discussion on the amendment to delay. Mr. Gendron.
Yeah, I don't think we should delay this. I think we should vote on it tonight. Let's, you know, I think there's been subcommittee meetings, there's been lots of discussion. I think we've all read the minutes. We all know the background. I think it's time to vote on it. And personally, I refuse to accept the fact that we shouldn't be striving for the most qualified person in every job. And I don't know if Mr. Conway was trying to sell me a bridge, but I believe that that's what we should be striving for. If it doesn't happen from time to time, I suppose that's the case in any organization. But that's the standard that I hold, the superintendent, to in this district. Hire the most qualified person. We can't just eliminate people because they happen to be related to somebody. There could be some very qualified people in that, in those roles. And if we're going to go that far, then what about friends? And what about neighbors of administrators or school committee people? Should we have, you know, investigate people to find out if they don't, they have some kind of connection to people? We're going down a path that we shouldn't be going. I think that what's set out in Mass. General Law is sufficient. I think we all need to hold our administration to the standard of hiring the best candidate, no matter what. And we should just, you know, vote against this delay, again, and vote on the, on the motion that's on the floor. Thank you.
Ms. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say that the, I understand the concerns that you're saying about a lawsuit and filing a lawsuit, and that no one's brought one forward. I don't know if that's true or not true. But what I do know is that there were a lot of phone calls, not one or two people that were disgruntled that they didn't get hired, as Mr. Delary stated. I'm sorry? Oh, I got over 60 after the Lowell Sun article went. So just so you know that, that it wasn't just one or two disgruntled employees. And more than anything else that I heard was that they didn't bother applying for a position if there was a family member of a top-level administrator that had applied. So whether or not you consider the perception as real or not real, I mean, it was a legitimate concern that I heard from enough people to bring the motion forward. I don't agree with diluting this down to the state, the bare minimum. I'm also not sure how weakening the policy serves us in any way at all. And I just, I believe we should move forward with the vote on it, too.
Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would also concur that I really think that this is an issue that we have discussed for a very long time, and that we should make a final decision this evening. So I would, I would certainly support the idea of moving forward, actually taking a vote tonight, and making a final determination as much as we can. It certainly brings up a lot of different questions, and I appreciate both sides of the issue. But I do have to say that there is, as my colleague had noted, there's no other, there's no other barometer that we can use in choosing people for jobs than that we get the best and the brightest and the most talented people in every single position. Honestly, I think it's sacrilege not to. I mean, we're, and we're entrusted with a very important quest, this district. And the education of our community lies in the quality of people who stand at the front of our classrooms, and the administrators, and all the many staff members who do this work all day, every day. To do anything less than put the best, most talented people in front of these children, again, is absolutely an anathema. We cannot do it. We'd be remiss in the responsibility we've taken on as a school committee. My own feeling on that, which is obviously a fairly strong one. But I think one of the key things when we start talking about whether, you know, taking this extra step of being more strident in our, in our zeal to keep relatives from moving through our district, you know, one of the key things to remember is that we are part of the City of Lowell. There is nothing we can put in place as a school district that is not immediately mirrored on the city side. The city would have to take the same action. Otherwise, it would be absolutely unfair for individuals to apply for jobs within the city departments for promotions and whatnot, if they had any relatives working within the, within the city or working on the school side. If they're not penalized for their relationships, it's certainly unfair for school department employees to be penalized for those relationships. So I don't know if the council has already discussed this, if you already have plans moving forward. But I mean, there's no way that one half of the House can do one thing, and the other half of the House can do something else. In terms of opening ourselves up for liability, I can't imagine anything more clear than that situation. So I think that's certainly something that if the mayor or the solicitor may be aware of, that I'm not. So that could certainly be the case. But I think that, you know, again, moving forward, I would really think it would be in our best interest to make a final decision this evening, if at all possible. And that I think the onus is on all of us to determine that if the most important thing to us is having the highest quality educators in every position within this district, to hold people, you know, back because they have relationships that they have no control over, I just think it does a huge disservice to our ultimate goal of providing the students in the City of Lowell with the best educational opportunities we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you. Just very quickly, I think that, I think the city, to my colleague, I think the city solicitor made it perfectly clear that the, the towns and the cities that have adopted a stronger policy were not violating the law. So I think that just because the city side, should we say, is not doing that, that doesn't necessarily mean if the school side decides to do something a little bit different, a little bit stronger, and leads, leads the way in some form of reform, should we say, I don't see that necessarily as a problem. But I think is what my other colleague mentioned down there, and that's happened numerous times, where you have people will say, why would I apply for this job when I know the job is already taken? Why would I know that? Why would I do that? Why would I put myself out there? And again, this is, this isn't something that has, has happened in the last couple of years. It's been going on for a long time. And again, I think this, as far as I'm concerned, is a step in tightening up things and letting the public know and letting the personnel know that we're not going to put up with, you know, we're going to make sure that we do hire the best person. And guess what? A lot of people, when they do hear that someone is going for the job, they do not apply for the job. I think we all know that. And we talk about, we talk about getting the best person for the job. We've talked about this, I don't know how many times on the floor. Of course, we want the best person for the job, but we also want to make sure that the best people are applying for the job. And at this particular time, we're taking individuals, they're not stupid individuals. They're looking at the system and saying, why would I put myself out and apply for the job when I know the job is already taken? I know it. I've taken, I've given a name, and I put in an envelope to an individual, and I said, here's the person I'll bet you was going to get that job, because somebody told me. And sure enough, that was the job. So I think that, you know, again, it's, I see both sides, and it is a complicated situation. It's very frustrating. It's frustrating for all parties involved. I think I'll stop right there, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Just, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Delary?
Just quickly, who, who, Mr. Conway, just threw you to the chair, because that's an outrageous statement. You know, you put a name in and you wrote this person's going to get hired. That's just, it's outrageous. There's a remedy. And I wasn't going to say anything, but the comment, you can't, that comment cannot go without retort. You know, if you're not applying for a job, shame on you. I know a lot of people where I could have written an envelope, a name on it, this person was going to get it, and they did not get it. They're in the room. I mean, it is outrageous that you just throw stuff out that has no factual basis. We sit here time and time again, and often I just keep my mouth shut when I listen to this nonsense. Quite frankly, there is no evidence of that. If they did, please file suit, because you will win if you are accurate. The bottom line is you have ed reform. I don't like it, because I like to get some of my friends' jobs, but they're not going to get jobs because they're not always the most qualified individual. That's just the way it goes. And if you're not applying because you're afraid someone else is going to get it, well, shame on you for not applying. And if you're not applying because you're afraid someone else is gonna get it, well, shame on you for not applying. I don't even believe... You know, that's not even... I don't even believe that to be true. And I, by the way, I didn't get any phone calls on the issue. Zero. None. You know, I apologize for being angry, but at the end of the day, we need the most qualified people. Now, we have people... Like, my child goes to the Lowell Public Schools. I don't care who teaches my kid in the Lowell Public Schools. I want the most qualified individual. I don't care who they're related to. I don't care where they come from. I want the most qualified. And if, you know, if my colleagues' kids went to Lowell Public Schools, they probably would want the most qualified person, too.
Ms. Ross Sigawicz?
Thank you, Mayor.
And then Ms. Martin.
Going back to Mr. Larry's original motion, again, sort of repeating what some of my other colleagues have said, it's why do we have to have a motion to follow state law, which is what we're already required to do so anyway? So at the end of the day, a disclosure of a conflict is still conflict. And then to the other point where, you know, some of my colleagues have mentioned that it would potentially minimize the pool of applicants. I actually think an anti-anepatism policy would actually expand the pool of applicants. Again, opening up more opportunity and opening up that talent pool. So that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Just to respond to one small point. My comments regarding the balancing the city and the school department. I believe what the solicitor is referring to is that there are school departments who have made these decisions to have a more strident policy. But they can't do it in a vacuum. They have... Ultimately, anyone who works for the school department is an employee of the city of Lowell. There's no line between those two things. I mean, they get a city of Lowell paycheck. They have to adhere to all the HR policies and everything else that goes with being an employee of the city of Lowell. Having different things in place for both these groups of employees, I don't think we can... I don't think it's legally sustainable. So I would... I don't know, and, you know, I don't know if the city solicitor has this information. But my assumption would be that for these districts that did it, they had to have done it in conjunction with the city or town entity, because they're not themselves an employer. The city is the ultimate employer and has to set these, you know, set these rules in place. You know, it's like, I mean, the... I was just gonna say the water department, but that might cause a problem. I'm sorry. If the police department... Yeah, I'm not saying nothing. But if the police department decided that they had a different, you know, they wanted to put in place a different policy that was in conflict with the city's policies, they couldn't do it. I mean, they just couldn't do that. You have to be... You know, all these things have to be in line, 'cause as an employer, we have to offer everyone the same opportunities. So that was just the distinction. And I don't know if the city solicitor may have additional or conflicting information on that, but my sense is that as an employer, we need to be fair across the board.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. I did, you know, offline have a conversation with the solicitor. Chapter 71, Section 67 applies just to school districts. Madam Solicitor?
Correct, Mayor. And actually, just to sort of add on to that, some of these are difficult to match up, apples-to-apples, oranges-to-oranges type of thing. However, you know, when you bring up, say, the police department, it's an interesting example because, and again, this is the part of the process that we went through. There are... No two departments are exactly alike, but some become more unique than others. A school department, it is not at all unusual where you do have several members of a family, extended or otherwise, who essentially go into the profession of teaching. And policies that are designed to apply to school departments, I think, need to recognize that. The same is true for police departments. It is not at all uncommon that you would have within a given police force, right, a, you know, somebody who might be a captain, a son who might be lieutenant, a brother who is a sergeant, and so on. But with the police department, you have a hiring policy, and it happens nonetheless. You go through civil service, there's bypass, you know, and with the... As far as on the question of lawsuits, on that front, we do get a lot of challenges when the police department will bypass somebody. And, you know, the vast majority of the time, their decisions are held intact. But I bring that up only because I do think that's a legitimate area that needs to be considered when looking at these policies and which departments you apply them to and how you apply them.
Ms. Martin?
Because my understanding would be then that you would have to, you know, if the police department would then have to not have to. But in order to be fair, that the police department would need to put in place the same type of policy that would eliminate any members of the command staff, any members of, you know, the officers corps, that no one who was related to them would be able to take the tests to move up, would be able to, you know, get any kind of promotion, if it mirrored what's being proposed at this point.
Well, if something like this were to be applied to the police department, first of all, they're governed by a CBA, and there'd be questions as to...
So wait.
Right. But they would... There'd be questions as to whether that would have to be negotiated into the CBA for promotions and other matters. They're also regulated by civil service. And so civil service already sets out that process. And so, again, I don't believe that something like this could actually be applied to a police department for various reasons. And that's what I was saying at the outset. You... This would not be a one-size-fits-all for departments. There is within the school law, in Chapter 71, this threshold requirement. And... But I do believe it's likely because of these types of reasons that the majority of communities, at least forty-four that we're aware of, have formally adopted, as opposed to the majority of communities who, quite frankly, have not addressed the issue in any formal way. So they may be applying the law, and presumably they are. But I think taking the step... Taking the step of actually formally adopting something, I think someone had mentioned, would potentially send a message to employees that these matters are always taken seriously, as they are. And by putting something in place and adopting something, you're at least taking an initial step, and perhaps the last step, perhaps not, of addressing this type of an issue pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 71.
Mr. Gend... All set, Ms. Martin? Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel the need to underscore one final point, and that is that I feel as though the behavior that the policy subcommittee seeks to limit with this move is irrelevant of blood relationship. There are relationships that everybody has that could be influenced, whether you're related or not. That's why I come back to the fact that we have to fall back on hiring the best person. And while we don't live in Nirvana, we need to strive for that in all cases. You know, I personally, I have a sister who was a teacher for thirty-five years in Borreka and a principal, an amazing teacher and principal. I have a brother who taught for thirty-five years in the town of North Andover. He was an amazing math teacher. I have a sister who's a retired Lowell teacher. She taught in adult ed for thirty years, and she is an amazing teacher. And Lowell is better off because she taught here. She never would've had the chance to do that if I was on the school committee when she was hired. And that would've been a sin. We need to hire the best people, whoever they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Ms. Scott?
I'm sorry, do I have to address this? To say... And I do have children in the school. To say that the only people that my children could have as a teacher or whatever that are highly qualified, that we could find, would be related to the school committee members and the top administrators in the district, and that we can't find a high-quality candidate? I mean, I just... I just don't believe that. And I personally would have no concerns at all, as a parent, with not being able to have my family members receive jobs in the district. Thank you.
Okay. Roll call on the amendment to delay. The amendment... The amended motion, as I understand it, is to delay action on the substitute until the law department can provide more information on those school districts, the language those school districts use to tighten up, Chapter 71, Section 67.
Just a point of order, Mr. Mayor. If we vote against the delay, then we will vote on the substitute motion?
If the amendment fails, we revert back to the original substitute. Correct. Okay. Roll call?
Mayor Elliott?
No.
Mr. Gendron?
No.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Ross Sigawicz?
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Five noes, five nays, two yays, motions defeated.
Vote on the original substitute motion. Could you... The substitute was to not support the recommendation of the subcommittee to place ban... to place a ban and to adopt the recommendation of the law department. Is that correct, Mr. Gendron?
Mr. Larry's motion, I think, as written in Mr. Larry's motion on the agenda, I think.
That makes sense on the substitute? Okay, substitute... On the substitute.
Mayor Elliott?
No.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sigawicz?
No.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Four nays, three yays, motions defeated.
We're voting back to the original motion of the subcommittee to not adopt the recommendation of the law department to strengthen... Let me just get them. The motion was to recommend to the full committee the legal opinion and recommendation of the solicitor office be rejected and that the school committee implement a ban on the hiring of immediate family members of school committee members and administrators altogether while grandfathering any previously hired family members. Motion was made by Ms. Scott, second by Ms. Ross Sigawicz. Further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
No.
Mr. Leary?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Ross Sigawicz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Four yays, three nays, motions approved.
So I would just like to entertain a motion to accept the report from the subcommittee and place on file by Ms. Ross Sigawicz, second by Ms... Second, I'm gonna accept the report by Mr. Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, the report is accepted and placed on file. On Mr. Leary's motion, we essentially... That's been... That's been disclosed of as well. Moving on to the next motion of the evening by Mr. Gendron to request the superintendent dedicate part of the Parent Information Center on Merrimack Street to the Lowell High School store and request that the headmaster make plans to have it staffed by supervised students for specified hours during the day and potentially on Saturday. Second by Mr. Conway. Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're all excited about the school department moving to downtown Lowell. It's already created a greater buzz down there than we've had previously. One of the criticisms of that move, though, initially, was the fact that we have that potential retail center there that we're using for the Parent Information Center. This would be an opportunity to actually bring a little retail to the Parent Information Center. I had informally spoken to the headmaster about this, and he was certainly supportive of the idea. So, Madam Superintendent, I'd like to see if this is something we could put into place, where we dedicate a portion of that storefront Merrimack Street property to the existing Lowell High School store. Students can staff it. I know there's a business teacher that, you know, would be... could oversee it. We could sell T-shirts and school supplies and so forth from there. I think it would be a bonus to the downtown, and I think it would be a great program for the Lowell High School students to manage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Further discussion on this motion? Ms. Ross Sigawicz, and then Ms. Martin.
Actually, this is more through you, Mr. Mayor, to Deputy Superintendent Lang. As I understand it, the space that was procured for the Parent Information Center was pretty much mirrored the space requirements of the existing Parent Information Center, Resource Center. And so my concern with sort of carving out a retail space in that limited space that has already been procured would take away from spaces really needed for the Parent Resource Center. Is that correct?
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, I mean, basically, depending on the... Kind of the will of the body on this, I take this motion as we're doing the design of the Family Resource Center. If it's the will of the committee to do something like this, I would meet with the high school and try to get their ideas on what the store would look like or what available space they would need for something like this. And as we meet with the landlord over the next month or so to refine what the facility is gonna be built out to accommodate, we'll see how we could accommodate and where we could accommodate it so that it would make sense in the space. I guess I'm just taking this as kind of a recommendation to see if it can be... Can happen, how it can happen, and to then bring a report back to the committee. And we're really gonna begin those talks over the next month or so about the build-out. When we did ask for the square footage, we basically asked for about the same square footage that we had now. So we'll just have to see how conducive it is to the concept. But that's how I took it. I don't know if that was the intent of your motion.
All set?
Yeah, I think that was the intent, to request the superintendent to, you know, look at this alternate as an option. Obviously, we don't wanna restrict the Parent Information Center in any way, but I think since we have that storefront opportunity, you know, it gives us something we should... we could capitalize on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Ms. Martin, then Mr. Conway.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, certainly, if we wanna ask this question to the headmaster and get some direct, you know, responses from him, I think that's fine. You know, I know that the plans for the Parent Information Center include a lot of different things. I mean, including meeting space, including, you know, different ways that we wanna set this up so that it is really an amenity for our parents as they come in. So I, you know, walking by it every day, I have a pretty good sense of how big it is. Having looked at it as a potential retail space for other programming, I know how limited it is. So it's, you know, I think it's gonna be a challenge for us to be able to carve out a retail opportunity within that. And I'd also just say, as we, you know, again, asking the question, you know, I think that's fine. But in terms of staffing, how we, you know, will pay for adult supervision during the retail hours... And again, I know this just because I've gone through the process and determined that, you know, it was a real challenge to try and staff it appropriately. But you'd need to have, you know, during regular retail hours, you know, mirroring what's going on in the rest of the downtown, it's a real challenge to make something like that work. So, you know, certainly, the headmaster, I know, knows that, having had some conversations with it about it in the past. But, you know, if we wanna ask him to report back, I'm not opposed to that.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Mr. Conway?
Thank you. I think that that's... I certainly agree with my colleague as far as, you know, how much frontage is actually gonna be needed. And obviously, the headmaster can weigh in on this. What I'd like to ask is through you, Mr. Mayor, to the superintendent, is the eighteen-twenty-six store at the high school, is that still in place?
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Mr. Conway, it is.
So is that open to the public at all?
I believe that... I'm not exactly sure. It's open to the students, and I believe it is open to the public. I know that within the last year, since Mr. Martin's been headmaster, there is... You can buy things online as well. So I'm not sure of the operation, but the public can go in. It's specifically open, especially when they're parent...
Lunch...
Parent evenings and things like that. But I'm not sure how many people use it.
Well, see, I think what Ms. Martin brought up was, you know, who would man that center down at Merrimack Street? Because if we already have somebody at the eighteen-twenty-six building... Excuse me, the eighteen-twenty-six store, would that mean that they would be closing that down, do you think, or just expanding it? But if we're gonna expand it, obviously, we're gonna need another teacher in that area. But if we, but if we're going to expand it, obviously, we're going to need another teacher in that area, I would think. So I'd be willing to certainly let this go on and ask the superintendent, excuse me, ask the, the headmaster for his recommendations and how he would staff it. That would be my kind, that would be my concern, too. And again, if he was going to close the eighteen-twenty-sixth at the high school, which I would certainly hope he wouldn't, because I think a lot of the kids utilize that. And I don't know if the kids would utilize the downtown as much. Maybe the, obviously, the public would. So if there's some way to balance it, I'm, I'm for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think the plan was to not have to hire any additional staff, was to either, either move the eighteen-twenty-sixth or somehow balance hours. And, you know, it, I can't, we want to get a report from the headmaster and have the superintendent take a look at it. But I think the intent was not to have a retail operation that is open nine to five, you know, five days a week and on weekends, you know. It would be a smaller retail operation. But I think it would be something that could be good for the kids. It could be a great program, because you would be getting more public off of the street. It would have a retail operation there, would maybe create more interest in what's going on in Lowell Public Schools as people come in. So I think it's worth investigating, and I think that's all we're asking.
Especially, you know, on Saturdays, when it tends to be a little quieter downtown, any activity will. Madam Superintendent, did you want to have any more information? No, okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Ms. Scott?
Just one more question, Mr. Mayor. My only concern with this motion is that we just put the bid out saying that we needed X number of square feet of space in the downtown for the Family Resource Center. So I'm just concerned now, if we're going to come forward and we say that we have extra space after we just, I mean, just literally recently, we just said we need that much space. So that's my only concern. Thank you.
Okay. I guess we'll expect a report from the headmaster. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Next motion of the evening by Mr. Gendron. Request the superintendent provide an update on weaving community service efforts into the curriculum across the district. Second by Mr. Leary, Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So last year, we had our first annual Community Service Day, as we discussed earlier, when the mayor and I created that amazing garden at the Shaughnessy School. But part of that effort was not only creating a day that we dedicated or celebrated community service in Lowell Public Schools, but then taking that and finding a way to weave it into the curriculum of the school department so that various classes, like science classes and math classes, could take advantage of those community service efforts and make them an integral part of the program. So I was just curious, I was hoping that this year we could see the beginnings of that. So I'd like to get a report on where that stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Further discussion on this motion, Ms. Ross Sikowicz?
I just have one quick question. I believe I, we did receive a report at the end of the school year, which outlined all of the community service efforts that were rolled out over the course of last school year. So are we just looking for an update on the update from the end of the school year?
I think if I understand the motion correctly, we're trying to actually weave in some more activities that would be part of the curriculum. I have spent some time with some principals talking about what they do at different schools. So we're in the process of collecting data and looking for different ways that we could weave it into the curriculum. So some of the things that have already been done or continue to be done at school for community service will continue throughout the year. But I think we were looking at targeting a little bit more specifically grade levels, certain activities that were going. So we're in the process of doing that at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Abrams. Mr. Gendron?
Yeah, to my colleague, what I was looking for here is not necessarily the list of community service efforts. Certainly, there are lots going on in the public school that they have been for many years. But what I was looking for is a way to actually integrate them with the, with the curriculum. Like, for instance, you know, the science curriculum and the study of plants. Then we go out to the garden, and we have an experiential learning process. So that's more of what I was looking for, a report on that type of effort.
Ms. Ross Sikowicz?
It's my understanding that with the number of schools that have the gardening programs that have existed over the previous years, they've already woven in, particularly in that aspect, they've already woven in their community gardens in with their science curriculum.
The report should be easy, then, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, that motion carries. Next motion of the evening by Mr. Gendron to request the superintendent provide an update on the collaboration between Lowell Public Schools and Mill City Grows. Second by Mr. Conway, I'm sorry, Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we, I think we covered this today, actually. We got our, our update earlier. So if it's not going to be debated heavily, I think we can waive this motion based on the update that we got today.
Okay, we will, okay, we'll chalk that one up as done. We'll just, we'll just move on. Motion to accept, while there was a motion made, and seconded, we did receive the report. So we'll accept the report as a report of progress and place on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Moving on to subcommittees. Policy Subcommittee Meeting, Report and Approval Amendments, we disposed of. Moving on to the reports of the superintendent. Middlesex Community College, Request for Additional Funds. Motion was made for the funds, and we accepted the report of, report of progress. Moving on to item thirteen, School Opening Report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The school opening report has two parts. And I just wanted to let you know what events have taken place thus far. We did have our Leadership Academy, which I reported at last, last meeting. We also had a vision of what we're going to work on, together with all of our leaders. The newsletter went out to all staff. We had a video getting families ready for school, telling us them the information. We visited school buildings on orientation day. I met with the food service workers. We have eighty, maybe a couple more since then, new teachers. I welcomed them to the New Teacher Academy. And I checked in with principals. We had a really smooth opening. And so, just so you know, we did get a number of new students. You can all see on the second page there what our enrollment looks like. We have received a number of new students throughout the district at this particular time. This is as of last Friday. We had up to twenty-four, twenty-three students in Zone One of our kindergarten level. And, I'm sorry, twenty-five. And twenty-four in grades two through four. Our smallest grade average is grade four. There's about twenty-two students at this particular time, as of last Friday. Our middle schools have large numbers. We have twenty-seven kids in grades five, six, and eight. And grade seven is a little lower, twenty-six point five. We did anticipate a little reprieve, especially in grade six, because the Lowell Community Charter School did retain their charter. So they had students stay there. And so we didn't get as many in grade six. But we continue to receive children every day. We will have continuing updates. And so that was the, that's the State of the Union.
Thank you, Mr. Conway, and Ms. Ross Sikowicz, Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for that update. And I just wanted to say that I, I had the opportunity to go to a couple of schools, one of them being the Sullivan School. And it was, it was an extremely smooth opening. The, the school itself looked great, and the, the principal gave a quick tour. And obviously, the kids were all engaged, and it looked like, it was, it was a great, a great sight to see. Because a lot of times, what can happen that first day of school, as you well know, it, it could be a lot of confusion. And I also went down to the high school, and I, and I want to give the staff down at the high school, and especially Mr., the headmaster, Mr. Martin, the, going through that school, the facelift, the things that he has done down there. I mean, I know that some of you people have been there. It's really incredible how they've changed some of the processes and the procedures, like at the cafeteria. It's, it's a lot smoother than it's ever been before. And again, I took a look at the, he brought me up to the Little Theater. That has been completely done over. It looks great. It looks like something coming out of one of the exclusive Ivy League colleges. And again, I compliment the, the headmaster for getting the colors correct, because you see red and gray all over the place, and also the signage. The signage is incredible. So I told, I told the headmaster that I was going to put a plug in for the high school, because it really looked great. Thank you.
Ms. Ross Sikowicz, then, Ms. Martin.
I just had one question with regard to kindergarten enrollment. Did we see, or did we, okay, so based on what we projected for our enrollment for kindergarten this year, did we see an increase above, above and beyond that anticipated figure?
Yes, we did. We reopened four kindergartens. And I have to tell you that this is the paradox of my superintendency. We have added one hundred, we've added so many seats. We had a hundred children go to the charter last year. We had, we have two more classes at the Rogers School. So we anticipated twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-two to twenty-four. And looking at that, we have had a large influx again. And so, Ms. Ross Sikowicz, as a matter of fact, we had kind of a conversation before this meeting began. We ask for the same kind of documentation for our kindergarten students as we do for all students. We have birth certificates. We look for a bill that, that proves that people live, or a, some kind of receipt from the home. But our numbers have increased by seventy-five children every year for the last four years. And so we're, we're following all the regulations on, on that, but the numbers are, again, at about twenty-five. And we didn't anticipate that. As of last week, we got, I think Mr. Dakota told me that we got twenty kindergarten students within the last few days. And so it's not that we're not looking towards at least having the capacity for this. We are receiving an extraordinary amount of children in that age group. And if you look at our numbers that I showed this evening, they, they go down in grades three and four. So it's not like they're staying long-term. So I, I, I think that we have to relook at the enrollment process to see what is, we, we, we go through the waiver process when we receive things, that when we write letters home, we go and we look and we make sure that we send, send people out to make sure people are living there. But I, I have to say that it is sadly a surprise, because we have added classrooms, a hundred. Last year, fifty more seats this year, plus that charter school welcomed a hundred more kids. So it's an extraordinary amount of, and I, I think we have to look into how we are following up. There are school districts like Lawrence that has home visits to their littlest students. We do not have the attendance department. We have, when I first came to Lowell, there were six multilingual people that spoke different languages and did visits to homes. So I have to say that it, it is something we have to look into. And I'm, I'm thinking through the Student Support Service Subcommittee and the enrollment piece. We might have to take a closer look historically, because that number has grown each of the four years that I've been superintendent.
I just have two quick follow-up questions, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yes.
My apologies. So last year, we continued to enroll particularly kindergarteners into October. And at one point, just one question, actually. So at one point, we wound up capping our enrollment. Are we looking at that at some point in the very near future? Because last year, we were asked as a committee to, to pull funding, to pull funds out of our suspense account to create more classrooms. So, you know, anticipating what our capacity is, you know, so that we're not pulling money out of our suspense account to create more classrooms, is there a sort of a remedy in place anticipating that we would continue to have these enrollment numbers, in putting a cap on that?
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this particular point, putting a cap is denying a child a seat. And so where, we will look at our community partners and see where, in fact, there might be space in, in a program, a community program, or the Lowell Community Charter School did start additional kindergarten classrooms. We'll look to see. We can't, we can't send people away if they want to enroll, and we wouldn't want to do that. Last year at this time, we did know when the numbers went up. We, we did have additional tutor in those classrooms, the kindergarten classrooms. We're hoping that the madness stops at twenty-five-ish. We do have two adults in every classroom, to be honest. But I will report back to you at the next meeting if this continues. But I also want to report back between now and the next meeting about what proactive things we might do. Because if we have any idea that people are non-Lolli residents, we need to follow up with that in probably a more aggressive way. If that's what we're thinking, and, and I do have thought of that, it's going to be complicated. But as far as turning a child away and having a cap, I'm going to have to come back to you if that happens. And I don't even have a spot to put a classroom, to be honest with you. So anyway, I just need, needed to make you aware of that, Ms. Ross Sikowicz. And it is something that's, that's a challenge we have to solve.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I think the, the cap that we had, had put in place wasn't on entry into the district. It was the classroom size, which is what was prompting, yeah, had prompted the additional, creating the classrooms that my colleague was referring to, because we can't legally say no. I, I do think that as you're compiling this information, certainly, I think, you know, before we make any moves, we need to wait for the census, the October first census, which will give us the real, the real numbers. I don't know, I mean, and this is just my own kind of anecdotal knowledge. I don't know how much of it is people who aren't living in Lowell sending students. The way this drops off so dramatically doesn't lend itself to that interpretation. So, so I'm not sure. Again, we have asked this question every September now. You're right. I mean, unfortunately, it does coincide with, with when you had come on board. So clearly, you're very popular with kindergarteners. But it, there has to be a way to find out this question. We've employed experts. We have done everything we can. You know, my sense is that asking the direct question to the, the parents, I mean, we know who these parents are, at the very least. We should be able to contact that third to fourth grade drop-off point. At the very least, they have nothing left to lose. If they were, you know, telling tales about where they, where they lived, then maybe that's where we find that out. But again, I'm not really convinced that that's the, the issue. But I, you know, again, waiting till the October first census will give us, you know, more solid numbers. But if the, the trend does continue, we are going to have to find additional space. And, and that's going to be a real challenge, admittedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on, Ms. Martin, could you take the chair for a second?
And the chair recognizes Mayor Elliott.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. You know, after I saw the report, and Madam Superintendent, thank you for the information on the newcomer report. And I, and I agree with you. I think we need to take this a step further. It's, it's really, the numbers are staggering, and it just doesn't make much sense. And when you sit here and tell us you don't have a classroom, that's, that's, you know, that's a red flag that needs to go up to, to this subcommittee and to the city, because we just simply can't afford. There's only so much that this, or any organization, or any district can afford until it starts to affect the quality of education of those students in the classroom. Twenty-seven is not a good number, and I'm not telling you anything you don't know as a teacher. When we're, when that, you know, when that, that number, is it the mean? It's not the mean, the mode. We, that, that deviation is significant, and we only see an increase. We, we open up another school, we're adding more teachers, more staff. When, when does, and we are bursting at the seams, and this report tells us that. So I, I agree with you. I think we need to take the next step to ensure that the students that are coming and going to the schools are, are living here. And we need to validate that, because other districts are doing the same thing. They're faced with the same situation. It's, it's going to affect those kids who are in the classrooms. There's, there's no doubt about it. Twenty-seven, I mean, that's the average. So some classrooms must have thirties, some may have less. the average. So, some classrooms must have 30, some may have less. But I think it's a significant problem that perhaps that happens every year. But why is it happening every year? And I just have, you know, one question. When do you see the spike? Or when do you see the increase in numbers? I mean, at the end of the school year, you have X amount of students. Is there any given time where you see a significant increase in enrollment?
Mayor Elliott, the amount of parents in families that have been at the parent, in the Family Resource Center on a daily basis, we have hundreds of families, whether they're new to Lowell or they did not enroll their students during the summer. I opened the door to a line of 50 deep to get in. We have kept that center open. So, it's not our promotion, it's not who we retain, it's who comes in. Well, it's really just two weeks before. It's not even, every Family Resource Center is almost a ghost town in July. First two weeks of August, about August 13th, 14th, and that as soon as school's starting, it is amazing how it fills up. So, you're trying to count ahead, but we don't know who's coming new to the city. And those numbers have been substantial. Last year, and actually for your next meeting, we will have more details by then because we're getting closer to final numbers at that point. But last year, it was extraordinary amount of families, there were an extraordinary amount of families from out of Lowell that just came in. Mr. Dakota, just the trend, he said a number of families new from San de la Mingo, Puerto Rico. We can't count those numbers. So, it has been, as always, we get a couple of hundred to more new kids. And then, we have these patents, like last year, Westford reported, a number of third graders. Well, we happened to be getting, but having those little kids, those six, five-year-olds, every year for the past four years, that's different. That's a trend. So, anyway, we will give you more information, but it is pretty astounding that you're opening the door at 10 minutes of 8:00 in the morning, and the center has been chock full every day of new families.
Okay. So, to me, that is a signal that is something that we need to look into. And you know, it's, it's not the child's fault. So, when, you know, I understand, I agree, I empathize, it's not the child. They deserve an education. It's not their fault. But, you know, moving forward, we cannot, this school system cannot possibly sustain this growth. And we, and, I mean, we all know this. So, you mentioned something in your remarks about an attendance or what, not attendance officer, but someone that does home visits. Is that what the city, Lawrence, and other school districts do? They have somebody that will validate that information? Attendance officers?
Yes. This was-
Any reason why you've seen this trend? We haven't done this yet, or we've been able to manage and just try to educate every child? But 27-plus is staggering.
We do. We have attendance officer. We have an officer, and we have a, we have two, two as a matter of fact. But over the years through budget cuts, we had a department. There was, of course, a coordinator of attendance, as well as six, I think. When I first came here in 90, whatever, that we had six full-time people who went out in multi-language and worked. We had, you know, English in all of our subgroups represented.
And can I ask you, what were they finding?
They would go and make sure that the attendance rates were good. And then, with the home visit component, so if there were issues with a particular student, they would make those visits. So, those, and that was probably before the year 2000. But over the substantial budget cuts that have happened here over the years, those numbers dissipated. So, we hold the attendance people. We have at this point, by law, there has to be an officer. And additionally, we have one for the high school, but we do not have that substantial amount of people. And we've been spending as much money as possible directly on the classroom because of the numbers being large. So, it has been, not been something we've been able to bring back.
And what were the findings of these individuals when they were hired? Were they fined on compliance with people that not living in the city, out of state?
They would be able to do visits off-hours. So, there would be night visits. So, they could find if people were in fact living there. They also worked on improving the attendance rate. So, if there was substantial amount of absences, they could help to file the CHINs report that used to go through the coordinator of attendance. There were multi-tasks that they could do. They would have a school assignment, or they would be used depending on their second language effectively, and there would kind of be a rotation. But that was, as I said, a number of years ago, when we were working on that, and they weren't in our budget.
I have a number more questions. I know my colleagues do as well, so I'll reserve that probably for a Subcommittee meeting. But just, can you just give me a snapshot? What is the number of students last year versus this year? Just an aggregate number?
Total population?
Of new students from last, say, the end of the school year last year.
I am not sure of that total at this particular point. They're still adding in. I will provide-
I mean, is it 500, 700, 1,000? Just not, not newcomers, not, just how many more new students do we have?
Kids that came in over the summer who weren't here last spring?
Correct.
It's hard to tell because you've also got the kids that left Lowell over the summer. It takes a good month to wash those numbers out. That's why the October 1st report is kind of the report that we go on. It's what we report to the DOE. We could probably report that to you, you know, second, third week in October.
That's fine. I was just getting, I just kind of wanted a general idea why these numbers have spiked so high, a classroom size. So, but that's fine. If you don't have a general number, that's, I can wait for the report. Thank you.
Mr. Leary.
Just, no, just to echo what the mayor is saying in terms of, the numbers come for the public. The final numbers really are October 1st. And that's really, it can wash out, as Mr. Leary was saying, how many folks are leaving, how many are coming in. I've actually seen going down to the Parent Information Center, it's wild, the day of school, people are registering for kindergarten. What I think we do need is want to follow up on the motion that Ms. Scott and I had regarding the newcomers. I know we wrote a nice letter, but let's really set up a meeting. Because I think the funding part of it, that is part of what we're trying to move here, is the dollars. I think what the mayor was saying really, at the end of the day, is we've got a problem. It's gonna come down to dollars and cents. And we're gonna need help for the newcomers because we're not getting sufficient funds to educate them. The second really issue there is, I agree with following up to verify that students are actually, they live in the city of Lowell. I think the component, Madam Superintendent, that the mayor was saying is, did we ever find that there was a dramatic number of folks who didn't live here when we'd had these programs in place with the truant officers? And I don't know if you get that answer today or not, but if it was a dramatic trend, if we did prohibit that, then it's worth looking at. I don't know if you're gonna find that, but I think it is, you're gonna have to look at that. The other issue is, when you come into the meetings in September and October, let's have a real action plan in terms of something similar to what we had last year if we do have the increases. Do we need additional tutors? It was a short-term fix. I think the problem is, we probably need more teachers. Maybe we do something creative. If we don't have space, if we have the numbers, we do a co-teacher in a classroom. You cannot have 27 kids in a classroom in kindergarten. It doesn't work. And we're gonna pay, we're gonna pay more money at the high school later on trying to catch up with what we couldn't get in kindergarten. So, I think the comments from the mayor are pretty solid. I think the motion that myself and Ms. Scott put on the committee supported, we need to really be aggressive with that follow-up because we're not getting the funds. And it isn't what we want to, as Ms. Martin said, you cannot turn somebody away. All right, thank you.
Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, it certainly is a difficult and a complicated situation because you take a look at, you know, the mayor just mentioned about when, when do you see the surges? You know, for example, at the high school, after a couple of weeks, two or three weeks, there's a surge that comes in. Well, where are these kids? They've been staying home for another couple of weeks, coming in from all different places. And all of a sudden, those numbers start to elevate in the classroom. And it becomes complicated. Also, what's been mentioned on this floor before, and it's something that we have to take a look at. Special Ed in the city of Lowell, in the school department, we do a very good job. The special Ed teachers, the directors and so forth, they do an excellent job. So much so, that Lowell has got a great reputation. And there are many other towns and cities around, whether in Massachusetts or any other state, that do not have these services. And we find that parents trying to get the best they possibly can for their children will come up with an address. And it happens time and time again. And, you know, once again, they have an address, they bring a telephone bill, or bring some type of electric light bill to the school. And the problem that I always encountered, you did not have legal custody. It would be parents that would be sending them with uncles and aunts and second cousins and so forth. They'd have an address, there's no doubt about that. But you know, Madam Superintendent, as soon as that student is admitted and has special Ed services, now all of a sudden, the cost of that student elevates quite a bit. And I think that's some of the problems that we also encounter. Now, it's my understanding that we do have investigators from the state that come in on that, Madam Superintendent, for the special Ed. Is that correct?
There are.
Do we call them in? How does that work, those investigators from the state, when they investigate special Ed?
I have to be honest, I do not know about that. I don't know when they're called in, if there's proof. I don't know about the particular.
All right. Well, then, what do we do to ensure that these students are actually at that address with the specific individual? And do we need, do we need the legal documentation to move that child from one place to another? You know, what happens quite often is that when something takes place, and that uncle or aunt or that second cousin says, hey, I'm not the legal guardian, you know, all of a sudden, things go wrong. And of course, all the responsibility lies right on the school department. So, you know, maybe that's something that we should take a look at with the legal department and say, what kind of documentation do we actually need to admit a student? Thank you.
No other, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leary.
A follow-up question. Do we, is our existing policy, do you have to reside with the legal guardian? I mean, I really, that's an interesting question because I think it makes a lot of sense. If you're, I don't know, you're divorced parents, mother lives in Drake and father lives in Lowell, they have joint custody. I mean, that's easy. But what if, you know, you have a divorced parent? Where is it, where are we responsible legally? Far as what, you know, I know we get the certain information, but say that, you know, the grandmother's not the legal guardian, but they say they reside with a grandmother here in Lowell, but the parents live in, I don't know, wherever. I mean, is that part of our policy? I think it's something we need to look into. Again, our job is educating kids, but at the end of the day, if you're really not a resident of the city, you shouldn't be going here.
Right. And we have affidavits that we have follow-up when we think there's some doubt where it's reported by a principal. However, legally, it, the child, where the child sleeps, that's the legal piece, and so where they reside. If there is a joint custody type thing, and they're half-time with parents, there's all these specified cases as we know because it's complicated. But they have to be with a legal guardian, if that happens to be a grandparent, whoever it is. But in the cases-
But it is, not to interrupt, but it is a legal guardian, though. So, in other words, if I'm going to Lowell Public Schools, they're supporting an affidavit that says, you know, my grandmother is my legal guardian in the city of Lowell, or my aunt is a legal guardian. That's our policy. Whether someone slips through the cracks, or we needed to go out and verify and all that, but that's at least our policy.
Yes. Any other questions, concerns? Entertained a motion to accept this as a report of progress by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Gendron. Motion passes.
Thank you for that report, Madam Superintendent. Move on to the next one. I don't know, 14, 2014 Summer Leadership Addendum. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last meeting, I had provided a report for the summer leadership, but at the same time, Mr. Conway had a motion. I thought it was timely for me to answer the additional information that was requested in the motion by Mr. Conway. I just lost the microphone part. But anyway, Mr. Conway had asked for a little bit more information, which were goals, direction, cost, and the future of summer leadership. I did attach the report that had all the agendas and whatnot, but just to go over what he was asking for, we really looked at data, we looked at information. And we set a course for the district. And so, what happened in leadership will continue throughout the year. We're looking at student data, making sure that the growth percentile is growing substantially. So, that's the work that was done. The goals of the institute are stated here, but we use a lot of our skills to build that. Additionally, you had asked about what this leads, leads to. Well, we're still gonna have the full sessions for our leaders. We split that into two days, which will work off, making sure the data is specific and kids are growing, and what it takes to guide teachers towards that. As far as the cost, this particular year, we were, we did have our session at the Lowell Community Health Center, which is amazing facility. They did lower the price substantially for us to be there. The total cost for 100 participants was $5,500. That was for an expert consultant that helped with some of the data piece, but it also was a substantial amount of work for my team. So, if there are any questions, Mr. Conway, also, the report that I provided for the last meeting is additionally here.
Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank the Madam Superintendent for the report, and I also thank my colleagues for passing my amendment when I'm not here. I think I have better results when I'm not here than when I am here. I'll have to keep that in mind in the future. Again, it was a very, very good report, and I certainly appreciate that. The, just a couple of quick things. At the end of the Leadership Academy, is there some type of a survey that's given, anonymous type of survey, Madam Superintendent? The reason why I say that is when we had to sign our name to it, everybody was nice. But then, when it became anonymous, then we ended up telling what we really thought, whether it was good or bad. So, how do you set that up now?
Mr. Conway, as a former lover of leadership, I will tell you how we do that. There are surveys throughout. At the end of each session, there's evaluations of those sessions and what people have learned. And so, it's submitted through email and whatnot, but we do take those back. And if you want more information about what the reviews were, I can bring that forward, but we do have a survey-
No, I think that's, I think that's fine. The only, the only other thing I would add is the, and it's something you just said about your staff participating and giving, giving some reports or some of the, some of the talks to this, to this group. Is that correct? Because I think that the, you know, a lot of times, we bring in the experts. And, you know, the experts are right in that room, to be quite frank with you. They're the ones that are dealing with the kids and the teachers and the programs and understand it perhaps better than anyone else. And I think that, you know, we take a look quite often, we have to go outside to get somebody to come in and tell us what to do. And you take a look at some of the schools that we have, and how well they're run. Well, those are the experts right there. And we, and I think we, I'm glad to see that you're utilizing them. And again, thank you for the report.
Motion to accept the report as a report of progress in place on file by Ms. Rossigowitz, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor? Signified by saying aye. And opposed, motion carries. Next reporter of the Superintendent is School Resource Officer Report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last meeting, we provided some initial information about summer school. And there was a request by Committee Member Martin for more detail. We had broken down how many kids participated in our provisional retention. There were 338 students for a variety of purpose. If you look at the second page of the report, the provisional retentions, there were 172- um, the provisional retentions, there were 172 students that went for ELA. Um, and 254 students for mathematics, social studies, and the attendance group was 34 students. And so, as we look at, um, their, um, that population of, of young people, we also have who was there, children's special education, as well as limited English proficiency and children who are non-SPID. Um, 293 of the 338 successfully completed the program, meeting the attendance and, and the requirements. Um, 34 did not pass summer school, and 11 did not participate. Um, if we went to the 21st Century Program, there was a total of 580 students who took part in that particular place. As far as data, um, the outcome in, um, the other one was more passing of the year, the first one. But this one is, how did, how did they, um, improve? So according to the SAO data, which is given to every student in 21st Century Programs, 15% of the children, um, made an increase, um, in, uh, grade level standards in ELA. In the mathematics student, um, we saw a 13% increase in mathematic performance. Um, at Lowell High School, there were 241 students enrolled, and some of them took more than one course. The number of grades posted were 335. So out of those 241, some of them took more than one course. Um, pass/fail, uh, 261. Um, 74 kids did not pass. And so the percentage who completely, um, completed summer school was 78%. Um, 22 children graduated from high school as a, as a result of going to summer school classes. Um, and 20, one of those, um, got diplomas, um, and one did not, uh, go, um, to the, did not attend the summer school programs. I guess it was 21 out of 22. Um, and three, uh, young people got a certificate of attainment, so that means that they did not pass EMCAST, um, which made 95% of them, um, did well in, in summer school. So at the Greenhouse School, there was a ELL program. The data on that particular, um, place, uh, show, uh, place showed us that 32% of the children gained a one-level grade in English language proficiency in the time that they were there. And 68% stayed at the same level. So maintaining capacity of in-language proficiency over the summer, there was always decline when they're not exposed to English. So this is some data. Um, it's interesting that the data now is, um, is, um, tied to what those programs kind of ask us to do for their, for their, um, for their report on progress. Some of the, um, some of them are deemed by the grants. So, um, I don't know if there's any more information you would like or any questions you may have about this report.
Ms. Martin, thank you. I, I actually read the wrong, uh, the wrong agenda item. We are on 15, Summer School Progress Report.
Um, no, I just wanted to, to thank, thank you and your, your curriculum and instruction office for pulling together the additional information that I had requested. Um, you know, we certainly see, um, a, a solid impact from our summer school programming. Um, the idea that we focus it on those students who need it the most certainly makes sense. Uh, the, the increases around the 21st Century don't seem as dramatic. My sense on that is that it's not as strongly an academic program as the other programs. Okay, so I am understanding that correctly. So, thank you very much for the, for the information. It's something that we certainly need to be tracking over time to ensure that we get the, the biggest impact we can for those valuable dollars that we spend each summer. Thank you.
For a discussion? Ms. Durkin? Oh, I know, I know.
I can try.
No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Um, just so you know, she's, she's lost her voice. Otherwise, she would be able to, to update us more. I, I just wanted to let people at home know that. But thank you for the report. All those, uh, all those in favor? Entertainer motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the School Resource Officer Report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, another fine report by Ms. Durkin, and she cannot report on. So you can save your questions for the next time, but let me try and get to it.
Thank you for all these wonderful reports.
Yes. Um, so, um, we're, um, in answer to the motion by Mr. Conway to ask the superintendent to meet with the appropriate city officials to discuss the merit and feasibility of staffing all middle and pre-K8 schools with a full-time resource officer. So, Ms. Durkin, Assistant Superintendent Durkin, has been working, um, very collaboratively with Sergeant Peasley, who is the coordinator of the School Resource Office Program. And, um, along with the chief, they, they got together to see how they could reallocate the officers. We do not have additional officers, but we could reallocate them. And so what happened in these meetings was there are two, what we call, grade officers. They did some, um, direct teaching of children, um, drug prevention, uh, different courses, which we have since, um, really put more into our curriculum over time. So what ended up happening as a result is that, um, through the chief and the sergeant, we were able to use those two grade officers directly connected to schools. So if you look at the report, the second page really talks about the mission and the duties. It really is, the original, um, thought of this whole program was to build relationships with children in a positive way before there are issues that happen out in the streets. So that was the original start. But as you look at the, they still do have that legal responsibility. If something happens that's against the law, they're right there to respond. So in trying to answer, answer Mr. Conway's question, we are not able to put a full-time resource officer in every building. We did not have the funding for that. But if you look at the last page, which is really at the, the most, um, beneficial page to kind of see where the assignments will be. So with Sergeant David Peasley, there will still be, with Sergeant Peasley and four officers at Lowell High School. But the other officers have in fact been connected to a homeschool base and neighborhood schools, um, where they would, which are the, are middle schools, and then reporting schools where they would be called to. So if you're at a Robinson School, the McCullough School next door would be calling to you, and also the other neighborhood school, for example, Greenhouse, would call. So not that there is one at every building, but every school has an assigned officer, and that's what happened as a result of the long thought processes and the meetings with the police department and student support services.
Mr. Leary, then Mr. Conway?
Just, I, I'm, what was the cost to add a resource officer? Because I think that, and here's my thought process of this. I think, I think that Mr. Conway's motion was a good motion. And I think because the rea- as you're experiencing events that are happening throughout the city now, we're always looking at one angle, punishment, which is a significant and important angle. But the preventative measures are much more important. And I, and I go around my neighborhood forever, and I know the local law enforcement, they try to reach relationships with the kids in the street. Stop the, you know, watch them play basketball, you know, with a ride in the bike, speak to them, get to know everybody in the neighborhood. This is a similar effect with the School Resource Officer. And I think, you know, the first part is, what does it cost? Because I think this is kind of good money going in front, will save us money going out later in a bigger, you know, more of a macro than a micro issue, not just the school system, but the city or the community as a whole. Um, so I think we really need to, I, I like the motion. I think we need to kind of find another way of doing it. Because I think it does, if you spend some money upfront, it'll save a lot of money down the road and probably have a lot of positive effects that we're trying to address, as the council's trying to address as a city right now.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. The, um, Madam Superintendent, I, I appreciate your, your report. And, uh, Ms. Durkin, thank you for putting this together. I appreciate that. Uh, I think it's a, it's a good first step, because I, I think that there were, um, individuals, parents, teachers, um, administrators that said, geez, you know, it'd be great if we had a resource officer here at our school. And I know, again, firsthand, how very important they are. And as Mr. Leary said, very proactive. Uh, they do create relationships, and it does cut down on a lot of the problems that we, we end up nipping in the bud. And that's why I say that when we take a look at this, I'd love to see this expand and make sure that we have as much coverage as we possibly can. I mean, these are different times that we're living in. It's, uh, you know, they're, they're not good times, and we want to make sure that everyone is safe. All students and all staff is as safe as possible. So I think, again, it's the first good step, but it's something that, uh, and I think what Mr. Leary just alluded to is the fact of, you know, we need to go another step further. I'm not sure what that is. But I think continuous, uh, talks with the resource officers, and maybe we can do some, uh, you know, splitting of the costs, should we say, down the road. And again, uh, to get as much, uh, get as many resources offices as, as possible is certainly going to help our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Ms. Rossigowitz? Oh, okay. So, I thought I saw her hand. Further discussion on this report? Motion to accept the report as a report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Next report from the superintendent is a report on sport-themed schools. Report update. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is continuing the sports-themed school, um, actions that we had last year. As you recall, um, field hockey and wrestling and tennis were added, and there were extracurricular and opportunities for young people in those particular areas. Ms. Abrams has provided us a report, not adding additional sports, but trying to maintain this in the budget that it would take to maintain this particular, these particular, um, sports. So in review of the equipment, she is letting us know that for field hockey to continue at the same rate that it has been, because we are using these three sports in our, our classes around the city, it would cost additionally $10,600. Um, for wrestling, um, we're going to continue the clinics at the Sullivan and the Wang School. And, um, there has been some lending from Lowell High School, so there's not additional, um, equipment that's needed in that particular area. And then, as we move on to tennis, um, to continue the tennis program as it has existed, there will be some additional, uh, equipment, um, in the amount of, um, $1,370, which to enable us to continue the existing sports-themed school, the extracurricular middle school programs, it would cost an additional $11,970. Um, and this is a report from Ms. Abrams. So if there are any, um, more questions, I, I would have you direct them to her.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, through you to, uh, Ms. Abrams. Um, could you just elaborate a little bit on this, on the success? And, you know, again, we have to judge these programs, obviously, and there's monies attached to it. Through your experience dealing with these, these three, uh, sports and coaches and the kids and so forth, what did, what were your findings on it?
Well, what we found, um, all the sports were very engaging. Um, the coaches were really excited about the work. Uh, what we found with field hockey, talking to Ms. Kater, who is the coach, um, this year, as a result of what took place last year with field hockey at the middle school levels, she had over 100 students that came to the high school this year that wanted to play field hockey. So it really made an impact, um, you know, out in the schools and giving students the opportunity to do this. We also had two very successful, and they were fun nights, uh, wrestling, um, meets that went on at the Sullivan Middle School. Um, the thing about the wrestling that we'd like to expand a little bit more, not that it's a, a cost that we would have to incur, but, um, it's the mats that need to be, um, in the schools. We have to have the right mats. Now, uh, Lowell High School does have the mats. Uh, if we wanted to continue, we'd open this up at some other schools, uh, we'd have to have a way of getting those mats to the middle schools. So that's one of the things that, um, we need to see if we can do. So that would be, uh, you know, DPW or someone, I don't know, uh, getting those mats out to the schools. But again, um, the meets were exciting. Um, you saw students from different schools, um, wrestling with one another, but it was really a fun competition. I don't know if any, I know Mr. Conway was there, but I don't know if anyone else made it, but it was fun. Uh, the tennis, um, Jen Carey was the one that, uh, spearheaded that. Again, very successful. We had the training last year from the United States Tennis Association, uh, for all of our teachers. They had the training. They were able to teach the tennis, um, not, if they, if they had courts outside, that was great. If not, they were able to do it in the gym, and they had had the equipment. But again, um, you know, some of those things need to be refurbished. And, um, I think it, it was a step in the right direction. I think we've got, um, more students involved in activities that probably would not have happened if we didn't have this focus. So it was, um, it seemed to be a great program, and this year we'll stay the course with these, uh, three course, uh, these three sports and maybe move on to something else next year.
I, I thank you, um, I thank you, Assistant Superintendent Abrams, again, for your, for your report. And I certainly thank, uh, Coach Kater and Coach Carey and Coach Sheehan. Uh, again, I think that you certainly have shown that it's, we've got a lot more kids involved in that middle school. And, and that's the area that, you know, has been kind of lacking in that, in that, uh, um, you know, in that area of, of sports. Um, I, I'd like to make a motion that, um, that we fund that, that 11, I think, believe is $11,970. Make a motion to, uh, to fund these three for the fol- is it for the following year? Is that correct? So they can all be set up and continue?
This school year, this school year.
This school year. I'm sorry, this school year.
Motion by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Leary, to continue to fund these programs at the amount of $10,000.
Eleven, eleven nine seven.
Eleven nine seven zero. And the motion, Ms. Martin and Ms. Rossigowitz?
I just want to ask if we have the funds in suspense to do that, or if there's some other place that, that we'd be taking it from?
Mr. Leary? Uh, Mr. Lang? Or Madam Superintendent, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you, um, there are funds in the suspense account if you want to allocate them from there. We hadn't looked at any other areas of the budget to allocate. We've already committed during the budget process. So if you, if you'd like to, um, take the 11,970 out of the suspense account, you can do that.
That's how we'd have to do it, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Rossigowitz? Further discussion on this motion? Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Rossigowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Entertainer motion to accept this report as a report of progress and placed on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Scott. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Next report of the evening by the superintendent, IDEA Camp. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a final report, uh, giving you the details of the IDEA Camp that we ran. Um, over 150 students participated in the program. Uh, we trained six more of our middle school teachers who will become teachers of these programs. Um, and we also, uh, employed UTEACH, uh, students who will become teachers, uh, through UMass Lowell in, um, our, um, program. I also would like to thank, um, the Galton Family Trust Foundation. These were all funders of the program, the Jeanne D'Arc Credit Union, MACOM, Cronos, and the UTC Aerospace Systems, um, for their support of these programs. Um, just to let everybody know that 80% of the students were Lowell Public School students, and we had, um, children from as far as Pennsylvania that attended our summer STEM camp. So just to let you know, um, how that went.
Thank you. Further discussion? Motion by Ms., uh, by Ms. Ma- excuse me, by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Rossigowitz, to accept the report as a report of progress and place on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Next report of the evening is on textbooks. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this is a report in answer to a motion by Ms. Rossigowitz and Ms. Scott, which requested a cost estimate for consideration for the committee, um, for updating textbooks, adding elementary science, social studies textbooks, science kits, art supplies, musical instruments. Um, Ms. Abrams, um, has provided us with what the, any of the new materials are, as well as materials that we have continued in our system for our core curriculum. Um, there is a page, um, that will tell us, um, all of the things that we have purchased, and, uh, we are continuing, uh, across the district. And, um, if you have any questions, um, I will welcome them.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress placed on file by Ms. Scott, seconded by Ms. Rossigowitz. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And the opposed, motion carries. Item number 20 has been disposed of. Item number 21, list of eligible teachers. Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is your, um, monthly update on our eligible teacher list. list for this particular time.
Discussion on this report. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress in place on file by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Mr. Conway. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, that motion carries. Next report of the night, Personnel Report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, again, is your most updated report of retirements, resignations, promotions, and new hires throughout the district.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz. Motion to accept the report as a report of progress placed on file by, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, that motion carries as well. Last report of the evening by the superintendent, Home Education.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a parent who seeks permission to home educate their child, Alicia Sermopolis, would like to educate their child. If this is granted by the committee, there will be 29 families who are homeschooling their children, and the total number of children will be 44 in the, in the city.
Moved to approve by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Ms. Scott. Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, under convention and conferences' request, we have one request by Brenda King to attend an overnight convention. Brenda King is a paraprofessional at the Abraham Lincoln School, who serves as Chair of Paraprofessionals of the United Teachers of Lowell. Brenda has been elected as a delegate to the Massachusetts AFL-CIO Convention to be held from September 15th, 16th, 2014, at the Cape Cod Resort in Hyannis, Mass. In order to participate, Brenda will be out of the district for two school days. The cost of the convention will be paid by the United Teachers of Lowell. Also, there is no substitute needed. Moved to approve by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Mr. Conway. Roll call.
Mayor Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Ms. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Ross Sikowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Next, item in the agenda, Communications. We, there was a letter of appreciation to the Lowell Community Health Center for the use of their facility for summer leadership. Motion to accept the, the letter and place on file by Ms. Ross Sikowitz, seconded by Ms. Martin. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, that motion carries. That concludes the business before the school committee this evening. Entertained a motion to adjourn by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Gendron. All those in favor signify by saying aye. In the opposed, the motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.